This is a special meeting of the Bellflower City Council, Monday, September 13th, 2021, at 4:00 PM in the afternoon. Before we begin, please note that all public meetings will be recorded. When a participant logs in via the computer or calls in to join the meeting, their name and/or phone number will be visible to all participants. Unless you are providing public comment, your audio will be muted and your video will be disabled. Persons wishing to be audience members to the meeting may do so anonymously. Anonymous participants, however, will not be recognized for public comment. Persons who seek to bypass the city's host controls will be dropped and blocked from the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Hamada.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Councilmember Santinez.
Here.
Mayor Coops.
Here.
Mr. Stewart, public comments.
This is the time set aside for the public to address the City Council on matters listed on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on an agenda item must utilize one of the methods listed on Page 2 of the agenda. You will be given three minutes to address the City Council. Attempts to provide comment at times not designated on the agenda may result in the city dropping you from the meeting.
If you'd like to speak, please use the raised hand feature. If by computer, it appears under the Participants tab. If by phone app, it'll appear under the More button at the bottom right-hand corner. Or if by telephone, press *9 to raise your hand and *6 to unmute. You will be called upon in the order received. You can then unmute your microphone so you can provide your comment. Do we have any public comments at this time?
Mayor, I'll give the public a moment to utilize the feature. Mayor, I'm not seeing any raised hands at this time.
Thank you very much. Item A, Mr. Stewart.
This is a consideration of possible action to conduct a City Council study session concerning development and impact fees. Mr. Re is with us today to talk about those fees and make some recommendations to the City Council. Mr. Re, go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Members of the City Council. To start with the general overview, development impact fees are one-time fees that are collected at the building permit stage, and the fees are imposed on new development projects. The fees are used to fund facilities to accommodate increase in demand for services due to the population increase caused by these new development projects. The state law, specifically the Mitigation Fee Act and Crembi Act, authorized the city to collect development impact fees to offset the cost of the facilities that are needed due to the new developments. These fees are commonly charged by other local agencies, and the City of Bellflower charges two types of DIFs, and they are public facilities fees and park facilities fees. The state law stipulates that the development impact fees must have a reasonable relationship to the impact of the development projects on city facilities, and the fees must be effective no sooner than 60 days following the adoption of a resolution by the City Council. The first initial comprehensive study was done back in May of 2006. There have been several fee adjustments. The latest fee adjustment was made in July 2019. The costs and adjustment factors include the cost of the land, buildings and improvements, resident population, daytime worker population, and occupancy density. The latest City Council approved fee increase was back in 2017. The current comprehensive study done by Woden is dated September 10th, 2021, and fee increases are proposed. For the public facilities fees, this is the inventory of existing government, general government facilities. They include City Hall, City Art, the Main Event Center and Fire Museum, and the Regional Transit Center and Parking Structure. For the park facilities fees, Woden developed unit cost per acre of land. There are three different components. Standard park improvements are valued at $440,000 per acre. Per Woden, this is a conservative estimate. Special use facilities are valued at $479,000 per acre. This is based on the city's existing inventory. And land acquisition is valued at $2.6 million per acre, and this is based on sales data. This is the inventory of special use park facilities we currently have. They include Sims Park Social Hall, Cruz Park Activity Building, Aquatic Center at Thompson Park, the pools, Thompson Park Gymnasium, and other facilities. This slide shows the changes in the land and facility costs and other factors since 2016. For the public facilities fees, the land and facility cost increased 93%, and this is primarily due to the addition of the Main Event Center and Fire Museum and Regional Transit Center and Parking Structure. For the park facilities fees, the land and facility costs increased 58%, and this is largely due to our adding the cost of park buildings and improvements in the 2021 Woden study. Currently, we do not charge for buildings and improvements. We only charge for the cost of the land for park facilities fees. Based on the 2021 Woden study, the public facilities fee for commercial development may increase 167% or 50.2 cents per square foot. For office space, the increase may be 180% or 63.6 cents per square foot. For industrial, 170% increase or 24.8 cents per square foot. For single-family, it may be 70% increase or $2,406 per dwelling unit. And for multifamily, the increase may be 44% or $1,703 per dwelling unit. For the park facilities fees, for single-family development, the increase may be 45% or $31,586 per dwelling unit. For multifamily, the increase may be 22% or $22,355 per dwelling unit. There are special fee reductions that are required for ADUs and J junior ADUs, and this is pursuant to the state law and BMC Section 17.17.130. For ADUs larger than 350 square feet, the applicants must pay development impact fees that are proportional to the square footage of the primary dwelling unit. So if they're building ADU that is half the size, they pay half the fee. ADU 750 square feet or less are exempt from the development impact fees. There are some inconsistencies in BMC Chapters 2.24 and 2.36, so we may need to make ordinance amendments to make the ADU fee provisions consistent. Junior ADUs are also allowed in the single-family areas, and J ADUs are 500 square feet maximum. They are also exempt from development impact fees. This is a collection data for public facilities fees for the past 10 years. Based on the Woden's report, the estimated revenue increase may be $20,000 a year on average. This is based on three years of collection data. This slide shows the park facilities fees collected for the past 10 fiscal years. And based on the past three years of collection data, the estimate of the revenue increase may be $110,000 a year based on that three-year average. At this time, we would like the council's comments and discussions without taking any formal action. The potential discussion items may include adoption of the public facilities and park facilities fees as is, as determined in Woden's 2021 study, or phasing in the fee increases, or adopting just a portion of the fee increases, or increasing the fees by the CPI increase only, or any other options or discussions that the council would like to have. We have also provided a survey of other cities' fees for the council's review and discussion, and we have in attendance a representative from Woden Financial Services, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Tay. That's very informative. Mayor Protem Ray Dutton, have any questions on what was presented?
Yeah, I have one to start. Great presentation, Tay. You mentioned that just the city-owned land was accounted for as public facilities. What about the substation which we lease? Do we include that because we're leasing it, or does it not get included at all?
Under our fee structure, that's not included because it's a lease. But if the council wishes to construct it, and then there's a construction plan or directive, then we could add it into the fee.
Okay, thank you. I might have a question for, I don't think Tay's the right person for this or not, but I'll set my mindset. I'll put it out there just in case maybe the city manager can direct it. But I know we take care of, you know, the public fees, the public facilities fees, which includes parks. And that's because of builders, and we're increasing the population, and we're trying to get free space. So I get the intent of the public facilities fees, but nowhere public safety comes up. Is that something that can't be a part of it ever, or something to think about?
Well, Tay will correct me, but it's not part of the Crembi Act fees, and we are seeking to recover some of that through some other fees that we've enacted over the years. But I guess Tay's asking formally, can we include that in the set of fees that you're talking about today, Tay?
Guess Woden can chime in, but if the council has a plan to construct it, then we can definitely recover the cost of the substation development construction as part of the new fee structure.
Right. I think he's talking about more ongoing performance of public safety.
More ongoing stuff, but yeah, just looking at another way to pay for stuff. And then, you know, it's kind of a gray area, public, it's public safety, public facilities. You know, the substation is a facility, but...
So I think...
It's all regarding to why we do it. It's because of the extra use on the city services.
Right. I think Tay, the question is, if we work outside of constructing public facilities or utilizing public facilities for public safety, is there a way to recover public safety fees within the construct of what we're talking about today? I don't think there is, but maybe, you know, maybe you or Woden might have a different thought.
Right. The fees are for capital in nature, construction activities or improvements that we currently have, capital improvements we currently have.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, perhaps I can help with this. The Mitigation Fee Act does allow the city to put together a schedule for, for example, equipment and those types of things. It cannot pay for, the development impact fees cannot pay for salaries or ongoing maintenance or anything like that. But if the fee study can identify the types of equipment that will need to be purchased as the population expands, it doesn't have to be a facility. It can be those types of vehicle fleet increases. Can't necessarily be replacement costs, but it could be bigger vehicles or newer vehicles as you have to add to the fleet.
Surveillance? I mean, electronic surveillance or...
Potentially.
You know, video and stuff, okay.
Yes. So what Tay, I think, is concentrating on are the bricks and mortar types of facilities. But the Mitigation Fee Act does allow you to buy and purchase additional things beyond that.
Okay, maybe something to look at a later day.
Actually, if I could add on to City Attorney's comment, we did provide, well, then, a list of our equipment, and included in the equipment list was public safety equipment as well. So we are recovering those costs. For example, the vehicles that public safety currently uses.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to add a question to that, a follow-up.
Right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, City Attorney, if I may, I'd like to see if I can expand on that a little bit. What about, as, you know, population increases, traffic calming measures or equipment that is used for that type of structural changes within the city? Would that be allowed?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so long as it's clear in the fee study and the calculations that those types of expansion of facilities and improvement of public infrastructure is not a replacement cost or a maintenance cost, you can potentially put those costs into long-term planning in order to collect for it through the years. So the answer to your question is yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Hamada, have any questions on the presentation from Tay?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Again, thank you, Mr. Re. Maybe just to tag one more question on now, traffic calming was, and I heard the final word, yes. But also for other, maybe some street improvements that may, street lighting expansion and the placement of street trees. As part of capital improvement.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as street trees can potentially be included, but again, it needs to be part of the expansion of...
Yeah, expansion, of course, yes. Not just a replacement, yeah. Anything that's new, that's what I'm pointing to. Anything new.
Now, the street trees are an interesting creature, if you will, because the city could, as a separate policy matter, not have those be public trees, but they could be private trees that the private property owners are required to maintain. But that's a separate policy call from what your specific question is. But trees, street trees are recognized as public facilities for purposes of expansion.
And then also street lights. Thank you. Mr. Re, if this diff would be changed, what would be the effective date? Is this a fiscal year change? Is this a calendar year, or is this, we could, we can do it anytime?
Anytime. Basically, we'll have to bring back the resolution approving the fees, and at that time, I believe we're going to need ordinance amendment as well, and it will be 60 days after the adoption of the new fees by the council.
I noticed that the public facilities fee, and now that's the lower one. It seems like Bellflower's been ahead of the game here, and see, most of the cities don't even have one. I know it's a smaller amount, but it's, any amount sometimes is useful. So is there any reason why you've heard that, like, other cities aren't going that route?
I think Carlos should chime in, Carlos from Woden.
Yeah. Hello, City Council, happy to be here with you all this afternoon. So in, you know, more built-out areas, the inner Los Angeles areas, inner LA County areas, impact fees are not as common a financing tool. So some cities that have already developed don't really see the need, and if they aren't seeing a whole lot of development activity, don't see the need to have a variety of different kinds of impact fees. Once you get out to the, you know, greenfield development places out in Riverside County, Fresno County, for example, there you see more cities using those types of tools to finance public facilities. So in the case of some of your neighbors, I would just guess that, you know, they developed long before impact fees were a common tool, and, you know, they can certainly adopt them going forward, but not every city sees that need.
Just curious, just using an example of a cannabis business, and probably Carl would be... So if there was a new one built, was it, did we assess the fees as, just, again, split the use up? There's a retail component, there's a office component, there's a manufacturing industrial component. Would they, would it be assessed, all the fees?
Yeah, you would, you would split up the square footage of each use and assess the each use, you know, corresponding with the particular fees for that use.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if that was another special use that may have had a different formula. So, okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just to clarify, there was no special impact fee associated with any of the cannabis businesses, if that's the question that you were asking?
Yeah, that was sort of, all right, thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. Mr. Sunny Santinez.
Thank you, Mayor. Tay, thank you for the presentation. Just for clarity, when we charge the development impact fees, do we need to identify the projects ahead of time that are included in this calculation? Or are we just trying to create a pool of money that can be used later on based on our anticipated, let's say, increase in population and things like that? So what's really the logic behind the calculation of the development impact fees?
The way we currently do it is, we collect the funds and we apply the available funds to projects that the council authorized when they adopt a two-year plan. There could be a longer term plan, but that's the current process.
Okay, so using the, I'm going to chime in, Carl.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll just tag team on Mr. Ray's comments, and Woden can comment on how it's specifically calculated. Typically, what happens is one takes the general plan for a determination of how far out in the next 20 years, what the population growth is expected to be, what types of expansion potentially to your jurisdictional lines are going to be, those types of identifiers. And then you take your capital improvements plan, and you take a look at all the projects that are planned over that amount of time. So you'll have streets in it, you'll have whatever other, if you had a fire department, you'd have a fire station in it, police station, those types of equipment. You combine all those factors together to come up with the development impact fee over a period of time, so that you know at the end of, say, 20 years in your general plan that there will be sufficient money in your account to pay for all the potential infrastructure improvements that you need to make over that period of time. Am I saying that well enough for layperson's terms?
Yeah, yeah, I'll just chime in and make a couple of comments there. One is on the parks. We don't identify particular parks, but we do, we calculate the fee to uphold the city's general plan standard. So currently, the city's general plan standard is two and a half acres of parkland per 1,000 residents, and that park fee recovers enough money to add two and a half acres of parkland for every 1,000 new residents. For the public facilities fee, our approach there, and certainly it's intended to be, to fund, you know, particular capital improvements, but the way we calculate the fee is by what we call your existing facility standards. So we take a look at the value of all the facilities that are currently serving your service population and ensure that new development going forward will provide that same value per person to fund facilities. And then, like Tay mentioned, every year, the city programs that fee revenue to particular projects. But I just wanted to make it clear that we don't have a project list that's driving the fee. It's rather calculated to maintain the standard that you currently have. So, yeah, and happy to answer any other questions about the methodology if you have any.
So just a follow-up question. So what kind of time horizon are we looking at in terms of the general plan to come up with the anticipated construction? I'm focused on the public facilities fees because, as you mentioned, the park facilities are very easy to calculate because we know exactly what we plan on doing based on the population. And also, we know that Bellflower is basically not park-sufficient at this time. So I'm more focused on the public facilities fees because going back to, let's say, 2006, when this all started, we didn't know about the Fire Museum, we didn't know about the parking structure. So I'm looking at the time horizon in terms of what do we need to plan for so that we can adequately determine the sufficient development impact fees for public facilities?
Exactly. So the time horizon that we're looking at is out to 2040, so about a 19-year window at this point. And we are, we use the SCAG growth forecasts to estimate, you know, development within your city in that time horizon. And as I mentioned, you know, there isn't a particular project list driving the fee calculation. It's your existing facility standard that's used to calculate the fees, and then we use that growth projection to estimate the amount of fee revenue. And you can think of that quantity of fee revenue as a proxy for the amount of facilities that you're going to need to build in order to maintain, yeah, in order for new development to pay their share of future facilities. So in this case, we're looking at a growth of, let's see here, about almost 2,900 residents and about 200 new workers, people that are employed within the city. And out to 2040, that will generate about $2.1 million. So you can think of that $2.1 million as their share of maintaining your facility standards, and that's the calculation.
Well, I guess what I'm focusing on is, in the public facilities portion, are we putting the car before the horse? Because I'm not clear yet in terms of, do we need to have a clear vision in terms of our public facilities going forward? So for example, let's say, we've been talking about public safety building. Another thing is, do we need another parking structure in the south side of the city? Those kind of stuff. So we really have not talked about it, and I just don't want to miss these big-ticket items when we develop these development impact fees. So a follow-up question related to that. How, what's the frequency of us being allowed by law to change the development impact fees? Can we change it every year, every two years? What's the law?
Yes, so you can change it whenever you like, really. The City Council just needs to have a study and then, you know, go through the public adoption process with a public hearing. And so, back into the methodology, I should note that the method we chose is conservative and doesn't rely on that list of future facilities. That said, if you do some facility planning in the near term and want to incorporate larger big-ticket items into the fee, we can certainly revise the fee, and it's easy for the city to adopt it, again, with just a public hearing. We could adopt and incorporate those items into the fee at that time, once more planning has been completed.
Okay, and the final question is, by law, can we, let's say, if the council decides to adapt the recommended new fees for the public parks and kind of delay the one for public facilities, is that acceptable?
Absolutely, yeah. You can take one or the other, or both, it's however you choose.
Okay, all right, very good. Thanks for answering my questions.
You're welcome.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it might be helpful if Carlos went through some of the other types of impact fee accounts that you see in other jurisdictions that Bellflower does not have, for example.
Yeah, absolutely. So parks is a very common one, which you do have, and then your general government or public facilities is also quite common. But the other really common fees that you are not currently charging, but other cities do, one would be transportation or a traffic fee, so that would fund the expansion of roads. Also, cities are including transit and, you know, frontage improvements in those types of fees. So that's a big-ticket item that a lot of cities also like to charge. And then, police and fire are other, you know, two types of fees. And I realize you are a contract city, so, you know, that might complicate things. But to the extent that the city is planning to build, for example, a substation that it would own going forward, that is something that you could include in an impact fee. And then some of the other types of fees that we see are for things like libraries, recreation centers. Recreation centers do sometimes get pulled into the parks fee, and I believe we've done that in your case here. that in your case here. And then there's utility fees, so water and sewer connection fees, to the extent that the city may have a, you know, provide those types of services. But those, those are the, the fees that we see commonly in a lot of places, and of course, there are a few strange fees here and there, but those are the main ones.
All right, well, thank you very much for that. Councilmember Victor Sanchez.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I think I answered my questions earlier, or I asked my questions earlier, and then a few of my questions were answered through conversation, so thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so having done that, we've got potential, we can take no formal action, or we can, we've got five different possibilities here as to how to go forward.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Sure you can.
One more, yeah.
Yeah.
With that said, I was gonna follow up. So we can come back, what I'm seeing here, we just update our, these fees at any time that we feel the need regarding the Quimby Act and the Mitigation Fee Act. And so I'm assuming that we can add any type of fee at a later date that we want if we had a study. It does make sense to me to have a public safety facility fee, we have a, we have a place. And then I was just, you know, I was looking at this example of the other transportation fees, and maybe we ought to revisit that. And I know there's a point where we fee the rear ends off of contractors, and maybe we need to look at that, too, where, where enough's enough. But I think we ought to, you know, get business done today and, and get that done, and then come back and review and see what we think, or even have a discussion for another day. That's all.
And I think I would agree with what Ray has said about, and we all agree, that law enforcement's, our use of law enforcement is primarily in our rental sector, and we've always looked for a way that they could bear some of that cost. We've looked at whether or not we should raise the taxes, the fees on getting a license, and that would go to a public vote. Would there be any way, again, this would probably be towards our city attorney, could we impose a fee that would be primarily meant for a zone of R2 and not R1? Or is, is that not legal, or are we in too, too exacting and, and asking for money to support law enforcement?
As long as you can make the findings within the fee study demonstrating that one particular use has a greater impact on those needs in the future, you can make that reasonable relationship. Generally speaking, it'll be upheld. You can't simply say, well, for example, commercial is going to subsidize all of these costs that residential otherwise has, because what the Fee Act requires is that you actually make that reasonable connection. So you need to make sure that, if you're using R2 as an example, that you make a reasonable connection between its increased need for public safety services as opposed to other types of, of uses.
Have you ever heard of a city doing that before? Or is that, are we, again, being the first to discover that possibility?
Well, you like being first, so.
Yeah, well, you answered the question.
We like being first.
But when we look at, you know, primarily a 68, 69% non-owner occupied, and we're always looking at who's using the services, it's always falls in that sector. So that would be a discussion I'd like to have at some point. What do you think, Mr. Dutton?
I agree. That's our industry, I've always said.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, on that note, actually, that bears for me the question as to why single family is 31, or the proposal is 31,000, and multifamily is 22,000. It's...
That doesn't seem like it's lining up with our thoughts here, does it?
No, it does not.
I think you'd actually have to ask the person that prepared the study for, for the answer to that question.
I, I can, I can answer that. So for the, for the parks fee, you know, the, the fee is calculated to maintain a certain level of service in terms of acres per thousand residents, and we use data from the American Community Survey, the most recent data they have available, to calculate the amount of persons living in each single-family dwelling unit and each multifamily dwelling unit in, in your city in particular. And so, on average, there are more people living in each single-family dwelling unit compared to a multifamily dwelling unit, and that difference in pop, in, in occupant density is what drives the difference between the two fees.
Thank you for answering that. Thank you for sharing that. That's fascinating information. I would have thought that it was the opposite.
That more people live in a room than in a single-family room.
Exactly. Okay. Thank you for sharing.
You're welcome.
When you look at our 51 trailer parks in Bellflower, how does that impact what we're discussing here? Is, because that's a state-regulated property, does that not enter into this discussion?
No impact.
I, I didn't look at trailer parks in particular, but to the extent that they're included in whatever the American Community Survey reports for your, your population living, living in dwelling units, that, that they would have been included in that sample. So, yeah, I didn't look at it specifically, but that, that population should be included there. And then to the extent that, and I, I don't know what SCAG looked at when they were developing the, the growth projection for Bellflower, but that may have been factored in there as well.
Mr. Mayor, let me ask a question, because mobile home parks are not really residential. There's no development, so they don't go to these development impact fees, right?
Not unless you changed, and again, I'm not sure if you suddenly were able to reconfigure your park to have more spaces.
But I...
But I don't know how that...
Yeah, but I doubt it, because it's, it's not really a, a fixed residential unit that goes to the planning department. It's a vehicle. It's, 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 it's a, it is controlled by DMV. So I, so I'm, I'm trying to say that it's, it's a gray area. I, I doubt if they paid the development impact fees. I could be wrong, but I doubt it. Because they don't go to the regular planning department, plan check, blah, 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 blah.
But we do have modular homes that are really not. I can think of a couple places where they, they're not on wheels, they're actually a modular residence. Help us out on that, Mr. Gurecki. You know, what's your experience been with trailer parks in Bellflower? You have none whatsoever? Because that's a state's jurisdiction?
I mean, relatively speaking, we, we don't do anything with...
Nothing to speak of.
Yeah, mo- mobile home parks, either as it relates to any of the public common areas within, within the, the development or, or the roads that are in there. Those are, those are items that have always been considered private property, and they don't fall into the jurisdiction of public works over there.
When you were looking at that private street, Jeff Street, and how it impacted that trailer park next to it, remember that discussion?
I think you're, it's not Jeff Street, it's the, the alley off of Cerritos.
The one that runs parallel. Jeff, is it Jeff Street?
Jeff says Jeff Street. Sorry, Jeff.
Yeah. It's a kind of a private street with no curbs and gutters and primarily gravel. But anyway, it doesn't make any difference what the name of the street is.
Yeah.
We were looking at that to try to improve that, but it was gonna be such a expense that we really didn't want to get involved in. Remember that story?
It wasn't the expenses, there has to be 100% participation in the street, it could go undone unless someone has to pick up the slack.
Right, and there was no slack.
Right, and the trailer park frankly had no interest in that, it was the biggest property on that street, and it kind of killed that whole project, so.
So what I'm looking at, is there any fees here that could be put aside to try to develop ancillary streets of a mobile home park like that? I'm, I'm really stretching here.
No, I know what you're saying, and I, I don't believe there is, but, I mean, we have the expert on the line today, so.
You remember this? Yeah. And, and to this day, it remains.
My point is, I, I think they escape the development impact fees because of the nature of where they are and who monitors them, because I still remember Steve Patterson having difficulty with a mobile home park here.
No, I know.
And so, so from that perspective, I, I thought, well, we don't, we don't have much control over it, because it's administered by DMV.
Tay, do we collect fees from the owner of the park, who, who then say how many units we have there, and we ask for the amount of money based on the number of units? Is that how it goes? Do we have any income off these places?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is Elizabeth, maybe I can interject.
Okay.
So we, for mobile home parks, they actually go through the state, so there's no building permits that they actually pull from the city. So to my knowledge, I don't believe we've ever charged a park or public facility to them, because they don't go through our entitlement process, they go directly through the state.
All right. Now, when you own a park and it's your business, it's a, and you rent out those trailers, many of them are not owned by the inhabitants, do we collect our fee like we did for units in a rental situation? Is there...
Right, I, I think there's a business license tax on mobile home parks.
Okay, well...
I think that's your question.
All right. All right, well, I'm, I'm going off on a tangent here, we probably shouldn't be. But nevertheless, let's get back to what we're talking here, the, we can take no formal action, or there are four or five different possibilities. Do we have a consensus?
Well, I got, I'd like to throw some more input in there. As far as, I guess, eight, either this be a Tay or a Will Dan question, I know you can't really say how much it's going up, but I keep seeing 40, 46% possible maximum increase is what I'm interpreting, and also 23% maximum increase. Is that correct? That's allowable?
Actually, the percentages vary by type of fees as well as by type of development. So the, on slide 10, under public facilities fees, it could be 44% to 180%, depending on the type of development. And for slide 11, park facilities fees, the ranges are 22% to 45% increase, depending on the type of development.
So that 46, oh, that's not even an average there, so I got it, okay. And then on the bottom of the front page of Foray's staff report, it, it says the maximum, you know, that, you know, we can do the maximum allowable cost recovery, and it's got $20,000 for public fees, and then it's got 120 for parks.
Oh, those are the revenue estimates, yes.
That's the revenue portion of it?
If the council chooses to increase the fees up to the Will Dan study maximum, then our revenue estimate is about $20,000 per year for public facilities fees. And actually, it's $110,000 per year on average for park facilities fees.
Park facilities fees.
Yes, we have to revise that number.
Gotcha, so it revises 110. So what is it now? But I know it's a formula they use, or is it just one dwelling unit has to pay this much? I thought it was per square foot.
Right, for the commercial office and industrial is by square foot. They, they pay 50.2 cents per square foot, or 63.6 cents per square foot, or 24.8 cents per square foot.
Okay.
But for the single-family dwelling unit, they'll pay, for public facilities fees, But for the park facilities fees, they'll pay $31,586.
Okay, I guess, this is what I'm trying to get in my head. Okay, we, we put some numbers down here, a maximum of 20,000 and then 110,000, and that's what they want to addition to what? So what number do we charge now? There must be a number that we come up with as an average to compare. I'm looking for a comparable number to the 20,000 and 110.
Right, 20,000 and 110 are rev, annual revenue estimate.
Oh, annual revenue, okay.
Estimates in terms of increases.
Okay, got it. This is annual revenue of past three years of history?
Right, looking at the past...
Got it, okay. Like I read that in the staff report, okay. This thing's pretty confusing.
All right.
Okay, well, that kind of answers my question then. I was, just couldn't put, make heads or tails of it. What I do see here in our job here today, a study session, it actually says, you know, we can add new DF, DIFs in accordance to the Mitigation Act. And this is just something that we need to agree on if we like what we saw with, you know, we're giving, we're, I guess we're gonna give a direction to staff with a consensus if we want to go after these recovery fees. And I'm thinking that we ought to look into a public safety DIF, development infrastructure fee, or whatever that is, and along, along with the transportation, you know, and anything else. I mean, we ought to give it a shot. We're here in the study say, stage, and we do have a company that's working for this, and it might be pretty interesting to see what we can get, or what comes up with. That's just my thoughts.
What about, is there a reason why transportation comes to mind? I, we all get the public safety. Is there, we're missing on something on transportation?
Well, we're using transportation funds like they're going at a style with Lakewood Boulevard handicap ramps, if I recall. We got the bus, you know, the grant for the bus stops and stuff, there's, we're cleaning, you know, the bus stops, we're, you know, there's, well, that's not the infrastructure. But I mean, transportation, which could be, help offset costs for, there are parking lots included with transportation? You know, parking lots, you know, maintenance, I mean, maintenance would be covered, I'm sure. It's infrastructure, it's wear and tear, or is it just new?
Or public facilities.
New.
New, new stuff, okay. We do have, you know, parking chores, we can probably bank land on the west side of the boulevard if we ever had to, for future expansions and stuff like that. I mean, I just see, see something there. It's, it's a kitty, like we have an art kitty, and it goes in, and then, once it just builds up, we're allowed to spend the money. You know, I'm thinking down the road, 20 years down the road.
Mr. City Attorney, what was suggested, is that all permissible?
Potentially, yes.
Okay.
I've been in jurisdictions that all have those types of, of DIFs available.
But, you know, we're all in favor of trying to acquire additional parking areas and improve the ones we have. We have been reimbursed for a lot of that stuff already, but we are looking for more, correct?
You ask, ask our Will Dan folks to put together a rate study to make the calculations. I'd want, yeah, I'd want some kind of a, a format on a rate study and the calculations on that, because I'm not sure how that comes out, so.
You know, or a public safety facilities fee, because we all know that we've talked around about what we're gonna do with the substation.
And perhaps, Mr. Mayor, members of the committee, the best thing to do would be to create a subcommittee to help craft that rate study in accordance with the Mitigation Fee Act. Right, because we may be talking about two different things there, but they're both viable, I get that. So I think, Mr. Berg, I was just gonna say that, I think that's the right course of action, we can, a subcommittee would help on that.
I have a qu, follow-up question on that. We've been talking about the, the public safety, isn't it part of public facilities? Because if it's open to the public, can that be lumped into public facilities?
Well, there, and, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that it may be lumped into the public facilities right now, but I think the, the point is that you can also take it back out and create its own impact fee for those specific types of facilities as opposed to just putting it into general government.
Okay, all right.
If I was a contractor and I was had to do a development, if I saw public safety facility fees, I'd know exactly what that was for. When you see a public or, a public facilities, you know, what's that thing? Is that, you know, but there's a, we have a separate category for parks, but, you know, what's, you kind of like think, okay, that's for the maintenance yard, city hall, something like that, you have that vision.
In the sense that we're, I, I think the consensus here, it seems like that we're going for additional study. I, I would go back to my suggestion earlier to come up with a general plan for all these facilities that we may not have listed, because you may think of something else. So I don't want to miss that opportunity, since we're doing this anyway.
And since, since I got this stuff, because I, I just read this today, and it, and this all just popped in my head, and that's why I didn't give anybody any heads up, what I was thinking, because I just come across it today, and I, I come out the door, when I go to work, and I'm just going 100 miles an hour, and have a chance to absorb this, my mind starts going... and have a chance to absorb this, my mind starts going, I think of this stuff. Since this is already throwing, flowing through my veins and, and ideas, or whatever, I wouldn't mind being on a subcommittee.
So could we act on what we are discussing now, or do we put that aside and wait for a more complete study?
No, I think we, the subcommittee, we have to appoint at a future meeting, put on the next meeting, and do that. And then, uh, I think what you're looking for, you provided direction now, I think what we're looking for is general direction, and then I think you've done that, if there's anything further that we could discuss that, otherwise, I don't, if there's anything council wants to say.
If I may, I'd like to add, definitely say that I'm definitely interested in, in us conducting this study. Uh, one thing I'd be interested in finding out about during the study phase, and is, you know, like, with everything, there's always a sweet spot, right? There's an equilibrium, and at what point does too much, uh, fee?
I don't want to play, yeah.
Or stunt our growth, uh, and so that's one thing that I would like to see in the study. That does not mean I'm not, I, especially, I'm, especially, I want to make clear, I'm very specially interested.
Can't kill the goose that laid the golden egg. Okay, bottom line is, I've been corrected, the city attorney said we can appoint the subcommittee tonight, if you guys want to do that, so. The city attorney corrected me, and we, we, the, if the council may choose to appoint a subcommittee tonight, if they choose to do so.
And I'd be interested in serving in that committee as well.
And Mr. Dutton, you'd like to play it?
If nobody else wants it.
Well, Mr. Hamada, you want to play on the, you want to participate?
Uh, I'll, I'll offer some more of the fun to the others.
Sonny, how strong?
Been on a few the last, uh.
I think we have two volunteers already.
All right, I think, so how do you, we have two folks here that want to play?
I think you've done it.
Okay, thank you. So, um, do we, is that complete this part of the discussion, go on to B, or what are we going to do next?
Um, if you're done with these discussions, and I think that, uh, the subcommittee has its plate full, I think we should move on to B at this point.
All right, no more discussion, guys, we're going to move on to B, okay?
Uh, yep, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, Mr. Reed, did you want to schedule the existing impact fees for public hearing before or after the subcommittee determination? Because I guess my recommendation to the council would be to postpone the public hearing until the rate study subcommittee is met, to see if you want to pull things out of one study and put them into a different type of fee category. So one of the things we discussed, for example, was the public safety impact fee, where you would have both in actual bricks and mortar facility, and potentially equipment being added into the overall cost for that fee, which I don't think is part of the calculation at the moment.
That sounds great, and also, I don't know what the council's comfort level is in terms of overall total fee burden to new development. And if we were to add new development impact fees, we may have to balance out some of the existing fees to the council's comfort level.
So you're recommending postponing it, Tay?
Yes.
All right.
All right, item B, 4B, Mr. Stewart?
There is a series of fees that, uh, public, uh, public works impact fees have come through on these projects, Mr. Gurecki has been put in the, uh, unfortunate circumstance of having to make considerations and provide recommendations on whether or not those fees should be charged, waived, et cetera. I think we're looking for is a review of those fees, Len's going to do a presentation, and to provide direction to the public works director, and how much authority you want him to have as he starts to consider waiving these fees.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, to kind of dovetail on Tay's uh, development impact fees, um, I thought it was prudent to bring forward to you guys uh, current issues that we are seeing as it relates to the public right-of-way improvement fees uh, that are currently governed by the municipal code. So Title twelve of the BMC, uh, allows that when a building permit valuation is over an amount set by council by resolution currently, that amounts twenty-six thousand dollars, that it, um, triggers, uh, the potential right-of-way improvements, uh, in front of that property. Typically, what we see out of these, these types of improvements would be the reconstruction of non-conforming driveway aprons, or the installation of sidewalk where there's no sidewalk, uh, sometimes it's the installation of curb and gutter when needed. So the, there's a component within the existing BMC that allows the director to waive, uh, all or a portion of these improvements if the total estimated cost of those improvements is twenty percent or more of the permit valuation. Uh, to give you an example of what we're seeing there, uh, if the permit valuation was thirty thousand dollars, then any of those public improvements over six thousand dollars are automatically eligible to be waived. So, the reason this has come up is just in the, in the past couple of years, we've seen a significant increase in the amount of fever, or the, uh, waiver applications that we're receiving. Um, I'd say my first four or five years here, I was seeing probably anywhere from five, six, seven per year. Uh, the last two years, um, right around twenty-three or twenty-four. Um, and just through August so far this year, I have gone through twenty-five permits, and we'll probably finish out close to thirty of these waiver applications for permits, uh, before the end of the year. The construction costs have also increased to the degree that the twenty percent threshold that we currently have, uh, is typically almost always exceeded. Um, so, a driveway apron in and of itself, um, for a, a, one, one parcel, is probably anywhere from ten to twelve thousand dollars right now. The, uh, sidewalk, the flatwork, is certainly, uh, expensive too. And that's just the nature of construction costs right now, as everyone's been seeing here. Uh, in addition to that, we have the ongoing concern regarding the lack of a nexus between the actual building permit project and the required right-of-way improvements. Uh, what I mean by that is sometimes someone will pull a permit to remodel their master bathroom, and that permit will be greater than twenty-six thousand dollars. At the same time, the way the BMC is written, uh, it also means they have to install a sidewalk in front of their house. So, the connection between the sidewalk installation and a, a bathroom remodel can, um, uh, present some issues, uh, in terms of that there's, there's little, no, no connection in, in between those two. So in, in addition to the public right-of-way improvements, we also have the undergrounding utility requirement too, and this falls under Title thirteen of the BMC. And just to refresh your memory on this, is, um, any overhead power lines, uh, phone, communications, uh, that are serving a property, they're required to be placed underground if the valuation of that building permit is fifty thousand dollars or more. So all, although the BMC has, uh, waiver criteria established for the undergrounding permits, it does not list the cost valuation as one of the components. Um, what we've also been seeing here in the last couple of years, because SE, uh, Southern California Edison's underground requirements have grown to an extent that they now include some very detailed design work. Um, their own people are doing a lot of the designs, and then they're also requiring, uh, Edison-approved contractors to do the work. Um, what we're seeing is the cost for this undergrounding, uh, is growing quite expensive as well, and oftentimes can be pretty close to the valuation of the permit itself, if it's in the fifty, sixty thousand dollar range. So in addition to Edison, obviously, there's, there's other utilities that we have to, that, that the property owner has to deal with, and the costs associated with that as well. And then again, there's the concern regarding the nexus between the building permit and the required, uh, undergrounding improvements. So essentially, what I was looking to do tonight is just have a discussion with the council, uh, and, and bring up some ideas or some thoughts, um, to be considered that we can possibly bring back at, at a later date during a, a, a full council, uh, council meeting. See, the, the number of waiver applications, like I said, is, is growing, and it's going to continue to grow, I, I don't see it turning down anytime soon. For our public right-of-way improvements, like I said, the way it's, the way it's established right now, I am waiving probably nine out of every ten applications that I'm seeing, because it, it meets the current criteria, and it's eligible for a waiver. So one of the things that we could discuss and look at is possibly, uh, consider changing the existing twenty percent threshold level. Uh, for the undergrounding requirement, um, currently, like I said, there's no, there's no valuation threshold associated with it. Uh, perhaps, uh, the council would consider establishing a threshold for the undergrounding as well. And then, uh, also consider amending possibly the permit valuation that triggers undergrounding requirement. Right now, fifty thousand dollars is fairly low, like I said, if you're remodeling your kitchen, you're hitting that fifty thousand dollar threshold, if you're, you know, maybe not with your bathroom, but if you're doing any significant remodel to your home, you're, you're getting very close to that, uh, undergrounding requirement. And then also, just to discuss the need, that there needs to be a clear nexus, uh, between the actual requirement and the work that's being done. So with that, I'm open for any questions or discussions on this matter.
Hey, Mayor Pro Tim, Ray Dutton, you got any questions of Mr. Gurecki?
When we require, um, a residence or whatever to go underground with Southern California Edison to the nearest pole, it does not include cable and phone? Now, is that what I saw in the?
Correct, it, it's similar to, you know, the undergrounding projects that we have done on the, um, on the, uh, streets, now the, 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 the phone or cable can?
What I'm getting at is like, if someone did a room addition, and we require them to run in underground to their s, their house, do we require them to run their phone and their cable, the other conduits?
Correct.
Oh, we do, okay, it's in the Belflar Minnesota Code. I just thought I saw a slide that said that it didn't.
No, it's all over, any overhead utilities.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's my only question, thanks.
All right, Mr. Sanioness?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mr. Gurecki. Uh, in your recommendation for the, uh, public right-of-way improvements, um, you were asking about the twenty percent threshold, uh, what kind of change are you looking for? In terms of the percentage?
I would be comfortable, uh, seeing something more along the lines of fifty percent.
Fifty percent.
So fifty percent of the project cost, uh, if it exceeded that, then it would be eligible for a waiver. Anything less than that, then our, our requirements would, would stay in place, and they would not be eligible to be waived from the project.
So if you can estimate, I know you may not have the, uh, exact number, uh, you said earlier that based on this criteria right now, threshold, uh, you're waiving nine out of ten. So if we change that to fifty percent, what kind of impact will that have in terms of, um, the waivers that you may be granting?
Probably, it'd probably reduce it by, by half.
By half?
Yeah, I'd, I'd probably be closer to forty or fifty percent waiver rate, instead of a ninety percent waiver rate that I see right now. You know, ultimately, when, when it comes, when it comes to a, a project, and say they have a, both a driveway component, as well as a sidewalk, um, you know, they go through an extensive review by, uh, by my public works inspector, Frank Preciado, and myself, and we're looking at, not just the property itself, we're just looking at the rest of the neighborhood as well, so. Sometimes there can be a street where there's, say there's twenty homes on the street, but nobody has sidewalk. Um, but the requirement, um, is stated as such that they need to have sidewalk in front of their location, as well as a driveway apron. And we know both of those two components are going to be in excess of the twenty percent. What we'll do is, we'll all waive the sidewalk component, not make them do it, because there's no other sidewalks on the street, but I'll make them do the driveway component, um, to bring it to city standards, as well as ADA standards. So I'll, I'll take, we'll take a look at it, and then we'll, we'll try to make it, so I'm getting them at least to do something, and it's typically the most relevant one, and the one that's closest to the twenty percent threshold.
Hmm, I see, okay. And then in the, when it comes to the nexus that you're looking for between the public right-of-way, right-of-way improvement, and improvement that the, uh, owner is, um, trying to do, I, I can appreciate that, the example that you gave, if there's somebody who's just improving the bathroom, why would they be required to do the right-of-way improvements? Uh, so are you looking for, let's say, um, a room addition would be a good example of triggering that requirement? Would that be an example?
The, so the, the BMC currently has language in it that, that gives me, gives the public works director discretion to, um, determine whether or not that nexus is there. Let's just say, from a historical perspective, um, it's, it's never been implemented. Uh, you know, we're typically always looking at, if that's what the requirement is, that's, that's what it is. I have not gotten into trying to determine whether or not, uh, a bathroom remodel should be triggering a, a, um, uh, a sidewalk in, installation. I'm looking more at the valuation, and, and what, what needs to be done at that property in totality. And, and then making them, uh, do that work when we review the initial planning permit.
Okay, all right, very good, okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. R, um, Director, thank you for the presentation, um, I think I want to follow up on that, one of the questions Councilmember Sunny Ness just brought up. Um, if you're currently getting nine to ten application, or you're passing nine to ten, out of ten applications, right? Moving forward with the more, um, clear nexus between projects, um, you probably would also have a lot less applications too.
Correct.
Right, because I, I would assume that some of your applications currently right now are coming out, because someone is trying to do their bathroom remodel, and it's like, wait, why do I have to touch my, you know, driveway, or my, you know, apron or whatever, the right-of-way? Um, so that's good to know, because I, I'm definitely a big fan of that nexus, and creating that clearer nexus. Um, I, I, I think everything here that you're sharing is, uh, is definitely moving us in the right direction, so, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Hamada, questions of Mr. Gurecki?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, Len, um, have you done any city surveys, uh, how, how, how all the surrounding towns are, are, are trying to address this also?
I, I have, no, we have, we have not done any city surveys, um, in, in speaking with the city attorney, I, I don't know that he's familiar with any cities that are currently doing this, I, I, um, have, this was not a component of the municipal code, um, in my previous city. Um, so this is the only place where I've, I've actually done it, but I, I certainly can go back and, and, uh, pull, uh, some of our neighboring communities, and, and see if anybody is doing anything like this, uh, as part of their, uh, their municipal code.
Right, um, since you, well, it looks like you waive most of the, uh, uh, you know, the residential, say, projects. Uh, do they not still have to prep for underground? Have it potentially ready? Or has that changed?
No, I, I bel, I believe it's part of the, part of the code that they still need to run their, the, the conduit, to the end of the private property for future.
Yeah.
In the, in the event that Edison or any of the utilities decided that they were going to finally start undergrounding their equipment, um, that these, the houses now are at least prepped
Okay.
uh, for that, on the pri, on the private property side.
Yes, of course, uh, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that was at least done, because that's what I had to do thirty years ago, so. Carl, uh, nexus, any thoughts on, you know, that, that famous word, that word always, you know, how this is going to fit properly with, with any potential changes?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, ordinarily, what I've experienced in all of my jurisdictions, actually, is when an application comes across, whether it's just a simple residential improvement or not, there is already an analysis made, either by the planners or the public works department, whether that particular project application would trigger the need for public improvements. That is the nexus evaluation at the time that the application comes in, and before building permits are issued. There's actually really, generally speaking, nothing on the books that is as specific as this. It's up to the building official and the public works director to make that determination, and what Mr. Hamada is referring to is there are three separate US Supreme Court cases with regard to what is called the nexus evaluation, or nexus calculation. Uh, there are some key words called rough proportionality, nexus, and reasonableness when it comes down to evaluating whether or not the obligation and the imposition of a particular requirement by the public entity versus what the project is, is appropriate. And so, my concern when- And so, my concern when seeing these, although there is some, some mitigating language within the municipal code, is these very strict thresholds. Okay, this is 20% or this is 50% or whatever it might be. Those percentages, on the face of it, seem to be very bright-line and easy to, to make an evaluation with, but as Mr. Gurecki has, has stated, it just doesn't seem right under, right now, in most circumstances, because what you're talking about is a bathroom improvement on an already existing structure or a kitchen remodel. And those types of things, there's really no nexus between that and building a new sidewalk or a new driveway. If you're putting in new landscaping, similarly, what's the nexus between the new landscaping and, and having to put in sidewalk improvements or a new apron or anything like that? If you're adding onto the house, that's a different evaluation. You're adding an additional room. That means potentially you're having an increase in the number of people within your household, and so that might make sense. I think that if you want to continue having these types of regulations on the books, that's fine. I do think, though, that certainly the threshold level that Mr. Gurecki pointed out needs to be increased, and probably we need to, to clarify the language within the municipal code about the types of key words that I'm talking about, that, that the courts have identified as being appropriate. I think, I, I can see both sides to the argument about why to have this on book versus not. It at least gives property owners the realization that, gee, this may be something else that I'll have to pay for when I'm coming in for a remodel. On the other hand, a disgruntled property owner can also point to this and say, gee, you're making me do this without really doing an evaluation of my actual project. That's why you, you are all elected to make that determination, which is best, but I do think as it stands right now, we need to make some tinkering with the municipal code if you want to continue on with, with these types of policies on the books.
Any other questions, discussion?
No, thank you, Carl. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Do we know how old this ordinance is? Because I, I know it's at least 23 years old.
I pulled that ordinance before the meeting, and it's, the last rendition of it was 2008.
2008? And is that where it went from 25,000 to 30,000?
Unfortunately, it's not redlined, so I don't have a comparison.
Because in, in 2003 or '04, it was a 25,000 threshold, and I spent 25,000 to put, you know, and had, it kicked in the, the five-year-old approach that cost $18,000 to tear up and put a new one in for handicap. So, I got stung by it. It's inflation that's what's done it. And I'm sure the one that I was in was decades old, too, then, and then it got changed, and I think it went up from 25 to 30,000 was the threshold. But I, I believe it's all relative. I think the reason Public Works is getting, you know, right in the waivers is because inflation. I mean, the, the 25,000 in improvements, that's nothing. Is, is, you know what a bathroom costs at? We've all done that. And to put a driveway in, that's a lot of money, too, to put an approach in. I think it's the, you know, it's the relationship of them, it's, you know, I think it needs to be adjusted and raised up, so there's not, and I've, I've got calls, you guys must have gotten calls in the last five years or whatever, over it, but it's all about keeping the gap bigger. The, the permit and evaluation needs to be higher now, because things cost more, along with the driveway, if we make put a driveway or sidewalk, I think it costs more, too. And it's the relationship of those two items really needs to be looked at.
All right. Have anything else you want to offer? So, where do we go from here? Do we need to, I, I like to consider what Mr. Gurecki said about 50%.
Yeah.
I think we should make some recommendations and bring them back.
The council. Yeah, I think, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think the direction from the council is sufficient to provide, to give direction to prepare a draft ordinance, and we can put in the recommended thresholds into that ordinance and clean it up along the lines of what I've discussed, and we'll schedule that for a future.
Yeah, we think that we have some direction here, we'll get it close enough, and then we can take it with at the meeting if we need to, with some changes.
All right, so we've got it covered, we're going to adjourn this meeting at 5:15.